Hello again, everyone, and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session, and on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville area Chamber of Commerce, we are pleased that you could join us today. Today's forum is coming to you from the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center, right here in the heart of Clarksville, Tennessee. This forum is intended to give you, the voters, an informed choice when you go to the polls on November the 3rd to vote for the candidate of your choice. Today, we're going to have the opportunity to talk with the candidates who will be on that ballot. They will be running for the Clarksville City Council and are seeking to represent Ward 9. They are, to my left, Mr. Scott Comparry, Ms. Karen Reynolds, Mr. Chris Lanier, and Mr. Brad Morrow. Now, in a moment, each of our candidates will have two minutes in which to present opening comments from their seats right here at the table. And following their opening remarks, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us once again on my right are our panelists, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question. Responses will be given in a rotating order. And at the conclusion of the questioning, each candidate will then have two minutes in which to present a closing statement. Closing statements will come in reverse order of their opening comments. Our timekeeper for this session is Mr. Phil Harpell. The Clarksville City Council is comprised of 12 council members, each representing a different ward in our city. Members are elected to fill a four-year term. The city council votes on city ordinances and resolutions governing the city of Clarksville. It also approves the budget for the city and sets the city property tax rates. Council members approve changes to city policy as specified in the city code. The council is also responsible for adopting potentially far-reaching policies and ensuring that those policies are indeed followed, all in the name of accountability. Each council member is appointed to serve on one or more committees. They might be the Community and Economic Development Committee, the Finance Committee, the Gas and Water Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Public Safety Committee, Streets and Garage Committee, or the Transportation Committee. Let's hear our opening comments right now, if we can. We will hear first from Mr. Scott Comparry.
I appreciate the Chamber of Commerce for having me out today. I'm pleased to be here. Appreciate the Custom House Museum for letting us use this space for its debate. My platform is pretty simple. I personally, at most, support our local police department in the most, I guess I'm a little nervous, but, yeah, we all are. But anyways, I support the police because of all they do. I don't think we have the issues like we have around the other parts of the country with our police force. And Clarksville's a melting pot of people, and we melt together to form such a unique community that I've lived in all my life, all my 49 years. My second part to my campaign is handicap accessibility. We have to do more for our handicapped citizens that are in wheelchairs and different walkers and different things to make sure all buildings are accessible to them, sidewalks are accessible to them. We need to really look at it. I guess if you don't, if you haven't been in a wheelchair, I was in a wheelchair for three months because of a leg injury, and after that three months, it enlightened me for the rest of my life. These are some of my issues, and traffic issues is one, a huge problem that we're all looking at. I'd love to see the traffic lights timed out a little differently until we get the roundabout. The roundabout is passed, it's going to be done, but I'm going to support the idea even though the voters don't seem to like the idea. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear opening comments from Ms. Karen Reynolds.
Hello, and I would also like to thank Leadership Clarksville and the Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event. I am a retired Army Master Sergeant, and I served for 21 years. I grew up in a small town in Michigan, and I left and joined the Army six days after my 18th birthday. When I retired, I chose to live in Clarksville, Tennessee, and I have lived in Ward 9 for 19 years. I am married to Billy Burgett, and together we have three sons. We are a family of service. I'm also a proud Navy mom. My leadership and family values are based on the Army's three Cs: courage, candor, and commitment. I work at Blanchfield Army Community Hospital as a business process manager, and I'm a certified project manager. I have two bachelor's degrees, and I recently completed the Army Management Staff College Intermediate Leadership Course. As a project manager at the hospital, I'm known as a person who does the research, and I problem solve from the bottom to the top, not from the top down. And I understand that it takes a team when you're working through a problem. I am known as a person that researches the issues. I'm detailed-oriented, and I purposely build teams and coalitions when I'm trying to resolve a problem. I am running for City Council Ward 9 to use my skills and ensure our community and growth patterns are inclusive, sustainable, and affordable for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear opening comments from Mr. Chris Lanier.
Hello, again, thanks for having us speak. It's a great forum. My name's Chris Lanier, running for City Ward 9, and I've been in Clarksville all my life. It's a great place to call home. My feeling of running is it's time to give back in a greater stance than what I've done before in many civic organizations, and reached out into the community and done things that everyone needs, and time to help steer the ship, I feel. Again, same thing that they've gone on is the traffic deal. You know, a lot of that needs to be rectified. Our education, of course, is important. That growth pattern needs to be looked at, and how we handle our growth, of course, responsible growth. Neighborhoods popping up everywhere. We need to know where those are going to be and how that's going to affect our school system. I have two kids in the school system, and I want to run for helping them to leave them with a better Clarksville. I look forward to serving, to being transparent within the city, having a voice for the people, and working hard for Clarksville. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear opening comments from Mr. Brad Morrow.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity, like everyone else up here. I just want to say that first, and also a lot of respect to the people at this table because it takes a lot to put yourself out for public service. So anybody who's willing to do that has my respect. I'm 40 years old. I didn't grow up here in Clarksville. Like Karen, I think we're the only two transplants up here. I come from Somerset, Kentucky. It's a pretty small town, about three hours from here. I retired from the Army in November of 2017, and I chose Clarksville. I wasn't born here, I chose it. I chose to raise my daughters here. I'm a single father with three teenage daughters, so prayers are welcome. Christian father-veteran. I'm a retired Army combat vet and a small business owner, entrepreneur. I sit on the board of the Academy for Academic Excellence, AAE. It's a small school here in town that services special needs education. I'm an Eagle Scout, and I'm conversationally proficient in Spanish and German, working on Russian and Turkish right now. So I've got my bachelor's from Austin Peay in public management, criminal justice minor. I'm currently in the master's program for teaching to be a high school chemistry teacher. More prayers welcome, please. And I'm running because I don't have a hidden agenda. I don't have anything personally to gain from this. I just feel like I have something to bring to the table in terms of transparency, common sense, openness, and working for the people of Ward 9. That's me in a nutshell. Thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll get into the issues and enjoy it.
That we will, and thank you all very much for those introductory remarks. Let's turn now to our panelists, if we can. We will hear the first question from Mr. Jimmy Settle, and it will be answered first by Mr. Scott Comparry.
Thank you. Mr. Comparry, capital projects are in the works for events, concerts, and sporting events. The county's multipurpose event center accompanied by a city parking garage is one example. The city also has 300 acres for a family athletic complex someday. There's still talk of a downtown performing arts center, and there's progress being made toward a hotel and conference center with an office park near Exit 4. It sounds like a lot going on, but I want to know what your stance is on public projects like these. Should local government be involved in this type of thing? And if so, what are some of the priorities as you see them?
Well, if local government didn't get involved, there'd be very few people in Clarksville that could get the projects going, actually. I think the hotel that, I read, I don't know a whole lot about it. Looks like it's going to be a nice conference center. It's going to be a good add to Clarksville. I find the event center that they're building downtown, I think it's going to create a lot of economic boom for the downtown Clarksville area, help those businesses down there, plus give us something for our people to do here. I think we need recreation, you know, things to do where we don't have to take our tax dollars to Nashville, Tennessee, and other areas, you know? So that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds.
That's a tough one that we must balance. We have only a limited budget, and I agree that we have to grow, and if the city does not get involved in some of these capital projects, there won't be income to get them moving, but we have to balance it. I like that we also have a park that we're working on. As we grow, we need to preserve our green spaces, and so I would like to see our capital funding work towards also green funding and green energy to get it started in our community. But I do agree with promoting the downtown area. I come from a town where they took down all the buildings. We have a great water view, but there's not much to do in the small town I grew up in, so I do respect that there is a balance.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lanier.
Yes, I feel that the city and government needs to step in and help get some of these projects going. There's a lot of capital, or there's a lot of other capital things that other people can step in and fill those gaps. Again, the Greenway Space, that's a great project that has been going on for years. The Impact is, you know, getting off and running, and that's going to help revitalize our downtown. We have done a pretty good job at that so far, and it's really come back. The parks, you know, I think we need to all have living space for our kids to enjoy and for us to go out and do things in nature, keeping us in Clarksville and not having to drive out of town to be able to spend our tax dollars here and enjoy the things that we have around town. It's a great thing.
Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, so if I understand the question correctly, it's, do I think that these capital projects are important and should be supported from the government level, the city government level? And the answer is yes, absolutely. Clarksville is growing. It's going to continue to grow, whether it's retired military like myself choosing to bring our families here and raise them, or people running from Nashville. Clarksville's growing, and a lot of people are landing here. So either we build these things, or we're putting greater strain on the very few resources that we already have. It's that simple. So yes, I think these projects are important. They're important to the community, and they need to be supported.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin has the next question, and it will go to Ms. Karen Reynolds for the first response.
Ms. Reynolds, in your opening comments and all the candidates, we learned a lot about you, but quite simply, a two-part question here. What qualifies you for the office of City Council, Ward 9, and why should people vote for you?
I think that I'm qualified to run for City Council because I am very good at listening to the community, and I have learned that you have to reach out and listen. You have to give a pathway to the citizens. Many of them don't understand how much their voice matters, and I want to be that person to teach them. And I would ask people to vote for me because I do have the qualifications of project management. For instance, we were talking about the Impact Center. Well, we just can't look at the Impact Center. We have to look at the traffic and the flow, and what's going to happen to all the businesses. How many bathrooms are we going to need? How many walks are we going to need to the parking lots? Things like that. And as a project manager, I already bring that talent to the table.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lanier.
What qualifies me and what would take people to vote? I've held many positions in different civic organizations. I feel that it's a voice to the people of Ward 9 and Clarksville to help this city grow. That's really what, you know, a city councilman does, puts the citizens first and helps the city. Why would anyone want to vote for me? I'm known as getting the guy that gets things done. This might not be my best forum right here, but when things need to happen, that's when I make things go.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, so in short, I guess it'd be education, experience, and compassion. Mark Twain said, "Never let school get in the way of a good education." But my school experience is mostly with Austin Peay and public management, so I think that gives me a pretty good background. I value that degree. I value the things I learned at Austin Peay regarding public policy, how it's made, how it impacts people. My experience as a combat leader in the Army, as a father, and as a member of this community for 10 years, gives me the compassion to listen to every single member of my ward, whether they voted for me or not, whether they're on one side of the political spectrum or the other. It doesn't matter. Whoever sits in that seat represents all of them, and that's where the compassion comes into play, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Comparry.
Well, I'm very civically orientated with problems around Clarksville, and I've addressed them. I started a page called Clarksville Expose: A Panhandler for Better Good, because we had panhandlers off every exit. They introduced people new to Clarksville, you know, it looked really bad on Clarksville to have these panhandlers living underneath the interstate bridge at Exit 4. So I started the page, and what we did is we went out and tried to help these people, the ones that needed help. We exposed the ones that were scamming people, and we urged the public to give the charity instead of the car one. This is something I've been doing for three and a half years. We give meals and stuff to people if they say they're hungry. This is something that's close to my heart because it just really had, made Clarksville look really bad to have that much, to be such a fine-growing city, and to have somebody off every single exit panhandling for money. Of course, you know, other things I've done, I used to volunteer with Montgomery County Fire Department. I was a volunteer there for a couple of years. I've always been involved in the community, and I've always been willing to help. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Alberta, your question will go to Mr. Chris Lanier for the first response.
Mr. Lanier, let's turn our focus on ethics right now. Almost daily, we hear about elected officials at all levels of government discussing issues regarding ethical practices in business, their office, or even personally. What is your position on the role of elected officials and ethical standards?
I think, I mean, I think ethics is an important topic. You need to always be responsible and know where you stand. You have to rely, though, on legal counsel and everything like that to some of these things that have come up. I know there's some ethics things that have come up with the city and the city council. But make a decision based on formed answers that are formed opinions that other people above you that have those knowledge, so we don't get into an ethics problem that we've recently got into.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, we have an established code of ethics in the city, and if elected, I will follow it. It's that simple. We have an ethics code. The ethics code is informed by our understanding of the difference between right and wrong, and what we expect in the character of our public officials. I think that I have the values and the character to uphold that, and I intend to execute the office with transparency. I don't intend to violate anything like the Sunshine Law Act. There won't be any off-book public meetings. There also won't be any backroom dealings, anything like that. Everything's above board. It's recorded. It's open to the public. And the other side of that transparency coin is that the public gets to speak to me directly, and I respond. So ethics is a simple matter to me. It really is more of a black-and-white issue. The ethics code is there. We stand by it. We elect officials that we also agree or think will stand by it. Thank you.
Mr. Comparry.
Ethics, that's a good thing to talk about. I'm not a member of any civic organizations. I'm standing on my own. I don't rub elbows with anybody. As far as ethics within the council, if I violate the Sunshine Law, I don't want the city to pay for it. I'm going to pay for it myself. I'll pay for my own lawyer fees. That's what I think about ethics.
Thank you. And Ms. Reynolds.
Ethics, and I grew up in the military. I actually have 36 years of service to our nation. I am a civilian, a DA civilian, so I've lived my life around the words of ethics and ethical dilemmas. I was an Army pharmacy technician for 21 years. In pharmacy, you strive for perfection, and when you make an error, you don't cover it up. You research it, you correct the problem, contact the patient and the provider, and then you look at your processes to see why and how that error happened so it doesn't happen again. It's not, I understand that there are different levels of unethical behavior versus ethical behavior. I want to make it clear that I don't pretend to be perfect. I won't know all the rules, but if I make a mistake, it'll be my job to fix it and to be open and transparent while I'm doing so. Thank you.
And a quick caveat to that question, as has been mentioned before, not only do we need elected officials that will follow good ethical standards, but that we also hold each other jointly and mutually accountable for those standards. Let's go back to Mr. Jimmy Settle, if we can. Your question will go to Mr. Brad Morrow.
Thank you. Mr. Morrow, it seems we've seen a lot of increased land use rezoning lately in both city and county government for new housing development to accommodate predictions of dramatic booming growth over the next several years. Some say it's out of control, the rezoning. What do you say?
I don't think the zoning is out of control, the rezoning. I think what might need a little bit of extra attention is the additional help from the developers to make sure that these neighborhoods are put in in a smart way so that they don't negatively impact traffic and the local communities around them. As we already mentioned, Clarksville is growing, and we want it to keep growing, so the neighborhoods are necessary. And it's not just for the developers to make money. It's not just for people buying $300,000, $400,000 houses to have somewhere to sit. If you don't keep the inventory up, then even the cheaper houses, even the smaller units, become unaffordable because nobody's moving out. So it has a cascading effect throughout the economy. It's necessary to build these housing developments. Those zoning requirements are there for a reason. We want that. But they do need to be developed in a smart way. We need better buy-in from the developers. We need maybe to relook at some of our development regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Comparry.
Well, I'm in favor of developments, but I'm in favor of smart ones. When you develop a subdivision, you need to have a count done on what the traffic's like, you know, around that area before we approve entrances and exits to subdivisions that will impact it somewhat like the Whitfield 101 area and areas like that. We need to really look at that. As a city council person, I think it's my job, when there's a subdivision up for a vote, for me to go out to that property and personally look at it myself. That's one thing that I have that my opponents don't have. I've got a little extra time because I have a flexible job schedule that I can check things like this during the day, but that's my stand on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds.
Growth and development has been on the table for many years. In preparation for today's meeting, I looked at some of our previous Chamber of Commerce, and guess what? They were asking about growth and development. I think as a city council, we have to have the courage to be able to require smart growth, not say, "Hey, go grow, go put in 400 rooftops," and need more, and understanding that there's already a problem, and then after it's done, go, "Oh, we didn't leave space for a sidewalk, or we didn't wind the road first." Again, project planning and managing the projects and looking at all of the pieces instead of reacting to them. We have some issues to react to, but we desperately need a growth plan that includes affordable housing, traffic management, and some green space and green energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lanier.
Yes, I've been watching the city council meetings and seeing all the zoning changes that have been happening lately. I think where we need to go with that is a responsible growth. You know, again, checking traffic patterns, checking, making sure there's adequate turning lanes to get in and out of those areas. Some places have not had those added when those neighborhoods went in. The other neighborhoods that have newly been put in, most of those have had turning lanes and stuff like that put in, and growth and traffic has been addressed then. We need to go back and look at some of the other ones that are in there. So widening some roads, making some turning lanes, things like that. But yes, growth is an inevitable thing. It's going to happen. We just need to rely on smart growth.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question, and it will go to Mr. Comparry.
Mr. Comparry, let's talk about Ward 9 for a moment. Now, what are, say, a couple of issues that are specific to Ward 9, and what plans do you have to address those?
Actually, I've been addressing some while I've been out there. Even prior to becoming a city councilman, I have a gentleman has a water problem. He's got a pipe, dumps water from the opposite side of his road. He lives in a hole. All the water from his street comes from both sides directly to his house. He sets up a pump every time it rains to pump that water away, to dissipate. So I came up with a plan that we could build, we could terrace aside, slow the water, and that plan was rejected by the city street department. I'm not done pressing on that issue. That was just one issue. The second issue I've had, there was a green space, and there was a well-divided amount of people on the green space. And I'm all for green spaces, but the issue they had, and I'm not going to mention subdivision at this moment, was they didn't want unneeded traffic in their neighborhood. So I actually developed a plan where they could access city-owned property that meets the property to access it from Madison Street instead of within their subdivision. Now, they had a sewer problem, too, a sewage smell that would pop up, and I basically talked to a city employee. He told me what he had to do to rectify it, and the wood smelled like Fabreeze around there when he fixes it, but, which I don't think it's fixing it. But he did explain to me that the gas fumes have to be vented, or, you know, it could be explosion stuff. It's flammable, so there's many issues. The other issue is Sugar Tree Subdivision. I spoke for a long time with a lady up there. One kid has been hit by a car in that subdivision, and he's hurt for life. There's a second kid that got through it, but they have a speeding issue. I guess we need to send law enforcement out there. The thing I told them was, I wish they'd just be good neighbors and to each other and respect each other. So that's what I can say.
Ms. Reynolds.
Well, when I am talking to the citizens of Ward 9, it's always growth and traffic and speeding in the neighborhoods. Every neighborhood that we go through talks about how people are speeding and not following the speed limit. So if you're watching this and you live in Ward 9, please slow down in the residences. Your neighbors are talking about you, and sometimes they know what kind of car you drive. So you want to be careful with that. But how do we address that? I mean, that is sometimes a personal responsibility, or do we put in the speed bumps? Those are things that we have to explore is speeding. But also, again, sidewalks, and Mr. Comparry talked about that, is we have older neighborhoods that have narrow roads without sidewalks, and now the traffic is going through much faster. We need to really take a good inventory and then prioritize our funding and start swinging back as we add more rooftops and we build inside the city limits rather than sprawling outside.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lanier.
Specific to Ward 9, as we've been knocking doors, you know, many of those issues issues have come up with drainage, you know, water going across people's property that shouldn't. Of course, that's the street department issue. Traffic, that's been coming up many times, I think just about every neighborhood. Of course, we have a diverse ward, you know, we have an area from North Clarksville that's almost brand-new houses back to, you know, lower that's much older and listens to neighborhood concerns, makes sure their voice to the city and giving them transparency.
Mr. Morrow?
I actually don't have a lot of original content to add to that answer because my colleagues up here, we've all been knocking the same doors, we've all been listening to the same issues. People are telling us about their problems with traffic, their problems with speeding in the neighborhood, their problems with water drainage. So all I can say is exactly what they already said. In my mind, I think one of the best things I could do to help with traffic specifically for Ward Nine would be to heavily engage, like make myself annoying to the point with the state and county highway departments until we get work started on Trenton. Outside of that, it's pretty much exactly what they already mentioned. Curbouts maybe in the streets, in the neighborhoods, that would probably help with some of the speeding issues, speed bumps as much as people think about them. Our first responders don't care much for them, so that's all I can say about that.
Thank you very much. We will now turn to Mr. Jay Alberta for the last question from our panelists today. Mr. Alberta, that question will be directed to Ms. Karen Reynolds.
Ms. Reynolds, today in our country, there's a lot of talk about police departments and defunding police departments. I'm not going into that issue, but I want to talk something around that issue. That is, a lot of communities now are talking about community review panels for police departments. What is your opinion about community review panels and our police department?
I'm not sure. First of all, I'd like to say that I support our first defender, our first public defender, our public defender, our police and fire, I'm sorry. I support them, they do a wonderful job in our community. I've reached out a few times, I've been, you know, it's been a good experience and I think they do a great job and they strive to be inclusive. I'm not sure that our city necessarily needs a review board, but what I would like to see us do is include a behavioral health or social worker into the police force so they have a pass for some of the issues that really they're not trained to manage. We don't do a good job of funding the support for our vulnerable citizens and if we could take some of that off their plate, I think we would have, we would be serving our community very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lanier?
I support police wholeheartedly. I don't know if we really need a community review board, you know, for them. They've done a great job in, you know, in our melting pot of we have such a diverse group within Clarksville, it may be a little different than other places outside of here. Of course, this is where I've lived all my life, so living here, I've seen them interact, I've seen them handle situations that I just, I don't think the review board is really something that they need outside of their own review process to control them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morrow?
Right, so community review boards for law enforcement, made up of non-law enforcement individuals who don't have experience on patrol, they don't have experience under fire, they don't have experience making those snap decisions, no, I don't think that's a good idea, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Compero?
I'm not in favor of review boards. Review boards are, I trust our police department, that's the biggest thing about it, I trust our police department, I talk with our police officers and we need to support them here locally in the utmost. You know, review boards by citizens, I agree with Brad on that, but with no experience, I don't agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. That concludes the questions from our panelists here today. We will now turn to our closing comments, which will come in reverse order from the opening remarks. Each candidate will have two minutes in which to present their closing words today. We will hear first from Mr. Brad Morrow.
All right, well, I don't have prepared remarks, so I won't take up your full two minutes. I appreciate the opportunity though. Thank you, the audience, thank you for everybody who came and everybody who's watching this at home. Be sure to come out and vote, your voice matters, so let it be known. I hope you'll support me. I feel like I bring a lot to the table for this position and it's a transparency, accountability, and openness issue for me. So thank you very much and I look forward to seeing how things turn out.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Chris Lanier.
Okay. Again, I've lived here for 40 years, I've run a business for 21 here in Clarksville. I love Clarksville, lived in the ward for 16. I look forward to serving the ward, serving Clarksville and be able to have their voice heard. Again, as Brad said, get out and vote, it's your responsibility if you want to, if you want to put your ideas and opinions out there, then at least get out and vote, if not, run for office. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a closing statement from Ms. Karen Reynolds.
As a city councilwoman, I will work hard for our community. I plan to have a monthly newsletter and when there are difficult choices to be made, I will have a coffee with a Karen that cares and we can discuss it before the votes. We have some difficult decisions facing our community as we grow and we need strong leaders who have the courage to make the hard-right choices for our residents and our city. We are planting houses instead of corn and we must preserve our green spaces, large and small, create communities that are welcoming, affordable, and connected to our older communities as well. We have to continue to react to our traffic plans and issues, but we also must build a future growth plan for the future. We are transitioning from sprawl to infill and that is going to make some hard choices and traffic get worse. Sidewalks, roads, and green spaces must be included. I would like to tell everyone that you may not realize during this next city council, we will probably have to rezone our districts, so I want to put it out there that as a city councilwoman, I believe that voters should choose their politician, politicians do not choose their voters, and I pledge to rezone our areas in the best interest of our city and communities and not in my own best interest. Make a plan to vote. I plan to vote October 17th. Make sure you bring a friend when you go to the polls. My website is karenreynoldsvote.com. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
And thank you very much. And then lastly, we will have closing remarks from Mr. Scott Compero.
Over 22 years ago, I casted my first vote in Clarksville. One of the biggest things on the agenda back then was a referendum about ward voting. We had six at large, we had six that were planted in wards. And I was for ward voting because I wanted each individual to have their voice with their councilman where he was dealing with the issues of that area and I thought that was an important issue back then. Today, the biggest issue is, is that I don't think a lot of the city council people are listening to the constituents. I am a person that's been going door to door, I've been listening, I've been listening to the issues and your issues are going to be my issues because by gosh, the voters of Clarksville that's in my ward, you're my boss, period. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to each of our candidates here today, Mr. Scott Compero, Ms. Karen Reynolds, Mr. Chris Lanier, and Mr. Brad Morrow. Thank you each for being with us today and sharing your thoughts and ideas with us, but more than that, your willingness to serve on the Clarksville City Council, Ward Nine, is truly greatly appreciated. So thank you all very, very much. I want to remind you that early voting will take place starting Wednesday, October the 14th, and it will run through Thursday, October the 29th. The location will be at the Election Commission Office at 350 Pageant Lane, they're in Suite 404. I want to say thank you once again to our panelists here for this session, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Gentlemen, thank you very much. And thanks to Mr. Phil Harpell for serving as our timekeeper once again. Thanks also to the staff here at the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center for hosting today's forum and thanks to Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce as well as Rick Goodwin Productions for making this forum possible. Once again, we want to encourage you to get out and exercise your right, exercise your responsibility, and help make our democracy work by voting on November the 3rd. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for watching.